Good evening. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of December 19th, 2019 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 hours drive, Wayne, New Jersey, 07470. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. And we're going to rise in a moment for the flag salute and a moment of silence, but tonight, we would like to dedicate this moment of silence to three members of the Wayne Township Public Schools community who recently passed away. Sharon Belushi started as a first grade teacher at John F. Kennedy Elementary School in 1992 and continued to serve her students in the community well for the past 27 years. She will be remembered as a kind, thoughtful, and compassionate teacher and friend who is forever focused on her students. Her sweet demeanor and kind nature will be sorely missed by all of her colleagues, students, and parents at John F. Kennedy Elementary School, and the many generations of Wayne children who passed through the first grade classroom. Mr. Dave Olenbach, who serves as principal of Anthony Wayne Middle School, lost his youngest son, Henry, two weeks ago after a valiant fight against cancer. Although Henry was not a student in the Wayne Township Public Schools, he became a central figure in the community due to the community's support for the Olenbach family and from how Henry's family lovingly chronicled his struggles on social media. Henry became a heroic figure in this and many other communities, and his courage will always be an inspiration. Dr. David Raza served as the school physician for the Wayne Township Public Schools for many years. Dr. Raza was certified by the American Board of Family Medicine and was a member of the American Academy of Family Physicians, the New Jersey Academy of Family Physicians, and the American Medical Association. St. Joseph's Wayne Hospital Foundation honored him in 2008 as distinguished physicians of the year, in addition to other causes and charitable organizations including the St. Joseph Hospital Foundation, the Wayne Police Department, and Breast Cancer Walk. So please keep all of their families in your hearts tonight. Thank you. Please rise for the flag salute. Federal agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Dr. Toback.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. What I'd like to do is get started with our recognition program. First, I'd like to recognize the student artists whose work is on display in the back of the room. Nicholas Stapalito, Katie Fox, Alexander Werner, Phoebe Soboy, Gabby Mateo, and Alexandra Katz, all students from Anthony Wayne Middle School. And at this time, what I'd like to do is introduce one of our favorite board meetings, of course, is for the holidays, we have a musical performance. And this year, we have the Wayne Valley High School Chamber Choir, directed by Lori Russo-Niello. So, special songs of the season.
(Singing) "Hark! Hark! Bell, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, 'Throw cares away! Christmas is here, bring even cheer, to young and old, bring in a bowl; ding-dong, dong, that is their song, with joyful ring, all garrulink. One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere, filling the air; oh, harley, hale, raising the sound, o'er the hens, and o'er the dove; gilly, 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 while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here, bring merry, 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 Christmas! Merry, 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 Christmas! Mole, mole, send all without end, their joyful tone to everyone. Hark! Hark! Bell, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, 'Throw cares away! Christmas is here, bring even cheer, to young and old, bring in a bowl; ding-dong, dong, that is their song, with joyful ring, all garrulink. One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere, filling the air; oh, harley, hale, raising the sound, o'er the hens, and o'er the dove; gilly, 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 while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here, bring merry, 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 Christmas! Merry, 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 Christmas! Mole, mole, send all without end, their joyful tone to everyone. All without end, everyone.
At the holidays off, we do a lot of varied music throughout the year, and even during the holiday season, we really try to touch on every subject possible. My heart's trying to find a really good Hanukkah song, and Hanukkah doesn't even start until next week, so I went with something a little bit more generic called "Pashana Habah." We like to do a lot of different languages. And, of course, we tried it. Gosh, we touched maybe about three or four different languages a year, and a lot of history as well. But the Jewish paraphrase of this piece, I think, is quite beautiful. "Next year, when peace will come, we shall return to the simple pleasures of life, so long in eyes. You will see, you will see, of how great for me..." (Music)
(Singing) "Pashana Habah. Pashana 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 Habah.
I also teach at Anthony Wayne, and he asked after what you said before about the Olenbach family, we've been quite a struggle for the past year. But the Anthony Wayne family as well as the Wayne community, we've been together so well to try to help this principal chat. And it's been quite a struggle. As a matter of fact, my concert at Anthony Wayne was the day after Henry passed. So, this is a teaching moment, and we talked about what musicians' role is in the world, and how we have to not only spread joy, but we have to be there to try to give some sort of hope, some sort of peace, and some sort of solace where there isn't much. So we dedicated this last song to the Olenbach family and to anybody else who might need a little bit of this. The song is called "Light a Candle."
(Singing) "Light a candle. Light a candle. For the old man who sits staring out across the windowpane. Light a candle. For the woman who is lonely, where we pray this night is the same. For the children who need more than presents can bring. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. For the woman who is lonely, where she'll turn from the floor. Light a candle. Light a candle. For the broken and forgotten, where the seeds of mortal soul. Can we open our hearts to shine through the dark? Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. And in the special time of year, may peace on earth surround us here, and teach us there's a better way to live. Oh, and with every flame that burns, we must somehow learn, there's lots of principles that we could never give. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle. Light a candle. Light the door. Light a hole or two. Light a candle for me. Light a candle for you. Light a candle.
...sort of a level of expertise, but he also sprinkled in a sense of humor. And so I felt that, wow, you know, this is great. It's great to be able to work with the board. Of course, it's very serious work and there's a lot of challenges that are involved in working on the Board of Ed, but Mitch sort of set a tone that this is a group of people that have a sense of humor. And so it was for any person looking from the outside in, you were an excellent representative for the board. And I, like I said, I will always remember that. I thought that was really a great way to learn more about the district. So I know certainly on my part, I appreciate your service to the school district and your support over the years. So, thank you Mitch.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. (applause) It's kind of like the Stanley Cup.[46.23][46.23](laughter) Pass it on and, no. At some point, you'll all get one of these.[53.21][53.21](laughter) You don't have to kiss it. No, very short and succinct, "Thank you." Those are special words, and I really mean that. And I don't know who put you up to it, or how much you were paid, but thank you anyway. Nothing, it's true. Nine years goes by quickly, and even though in the midst of issues and things that happen over the course of those nine years, you know, it's, you know, one may think, like, why do you do that? Why would, you know, it's a volunteer job, and that's all true. And even though we've had difficult times at times, there have been more great times than difficult times. And sometimes it's a shame that it gets overshadowed by those few, you know, issues that come up. But I thank my fellow board members, those sitting here, and those that have served before. We've had great relationships, and I hope to continue to foster those relationships over time. Me from my couch, watching you at times, but every other Thursday and some other meetings sprinkled in, you know, those dates, I'll figure out something to do. But I'm glad, I'm very happy, I'm proud, and I think I will miss it, but not right now. Thank you.[125.71][125.71](laughter) Thank you Mitch.[127.71][127.71](applause)
Should I stand on something?[134.38][134.38](laughter) You could have crouched downward.[138.16][138.16](laughter) Mrs. Kazan?
Well, I'd like to say, I've worked with Mitch for six years, and I value his insight as an administrator in another district. He's been very helpful to me in making tough choices. Of course, we've had our occasions of disagreement, but it was always professional, never personal. I'll miss his sense of humor. I don't know who's going to help me finish my sentences, or point things out on the agenda that I cannot find. Someone will have to volunteer for that spot and be seated next to me in the future. But I valued our time together Mitch, and I will absolutely miss you.
Mrs. Albanese?
I've served on this board with Mitch for seven years. My time has been longer. Mitch brings a wonderful sense of humor to the board, but also he brings a sense of some special knowledge. There's many times where we've turned to Mitch for information, things where he has specialty type of knowledge that he's able to explain situations to us or give us some additional insight as an administrator, as someone with some insights into the way things work, both in our district and outside. But Mitch's demeanor, I think, has been the most helpful for us, I believe, as a board. He's very calm, he's very level-headed, he has a practical approach to things, he doesn't excite easily, so he's able to kind of look at things through a different lens than some of the rest of us who may have that initial reaction. And, you know, Mitch can bring people back to, you know, let's look at this from a different point of view, let's look at this from a parent or a student point of view, or perhaps a staff or administrator point of view. So I think he brings a very unique ability, a very unique demeanor to the board. He served as our board president through some rather difficult times, and really was able to keep that even-keeled attitude for the board, which I know I appreciated and I think helped us as a board in general in presenting a professional demeanor to the public, and as well as a professional demeanor behind closed doors when we had to have some tough discussions at times. So I thank Mitch, I think he will really be missed, and I thank you for your time and your service, and the way you've always been there to help us when we've needed something. So we will miss you tremendously.
Thank you very much.
Tell him his neighbor, I'm off the missile.[298.33][298.33](laughter) You're not going to miss him?
On his neighbor, no. And he talks me into it.
Well Mitch, you are going to be missed. Just, just a little. The sense of humor maybe not, but the rest of it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, Dr. Toback, your report.
So there's a tremendous amount of reporting that's going to go on tonight. I know that there's a lot of committee reports, and also our students have two excellent reports, so I don't want to cover any of the territory that will be covered in later reports. The one thing I would like to mention is that I'm very proud to report that our schools are full of holiday spirit. So in addition to our musical performances, I'd like to just call everybody's attention to our most recent newsletter, because it includes a number of articles about the generosity of our students and our staff members, who through a variety of ways are supporting animal shelters in the area, they're supporting soldiers away from home for the holidays, and also they're supporting our local food pantries. So there's a variety of articles and a variety of different ways that our staff members and our students are supporting the community or others out there during the holiday season. And it's enjoyable reading, and there's some great photos to go with it as well. So that, basically, that concludes my report, other than to wish the board, to wish the administration, our staff members, the community, a happy holiday.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. Your HIB report?
So for this reporting period, there were nine total incidents that were reported as HIB, and there are only three of those cases after investigation that are actually determined to be true cases of HIB.
Thank you. And now we have our student reports. Ladies?
In a 21-17 comeback victory against Northern Highlands, the Wayne Valley football team won its first sectional title since 1991. Congratulations to the coaching staff and team on a historic victory in season. For the past few weeks, therapy dogs have been visiting Wayne Valley. Organized by guidance counselor Mr. Cheval, students have been going to the guidance office during their unit lunch to spend time with the dogs. The therapy dogs have helped students relieve stress and focus on their wellness during the school day. The English department has begun preparing students for Wayne Valley's annual Poetry Out Loud competition, in which students are challenged to memorize and recite a poem before an audience. For years, this event has greatly helped students develop public speaking skills, build self-confidence, and learn about literary history and contemporary life. The Wayne Valley chapter of the National Honor Society participated in a turkey and Thanksgiving meal drive in collaboration with the Wayne Interfaith Network and their food pantry. Students donated hundreds of turkeys, sides, pies, and many trimmings to help create baskets for Wayne's needy families. Wayne Valley has become an integral part of the Wayne Interfaith Network family. The Model United Nations Club held their first mock conference of the year, where students debated and created joint resolutions on forced displacement and the role of youth in combating climate change. Wayne Valley band members Nikki Pike, Crystal Yoon, Winston Lee, Joey Duke, Chiara Piasentini, Daniel Lashinsky, Joanna Saxon, Izzy Mailman, and Justin Sonnet were selected for the highly prestigious North Jersey Area Band Wind Ensemble and Symphonic Band. Congratulations to Anthony De Palma for receiving a Minimax Award as one of the top student athletes in the state of New Jersey in 2019. Anthony was also recently selected as the North Jersey Male Athlete of the Week for his performance in the group championship football game against Northern Highlands. With the support of student organizations like the National Honor Society and Peer Leaders, the annual blood drive organized by physical education teachers, Ms. Felner and Ms. Osbyazoo, was a huge success, and students donated vital pints of blood to the American Red Cross. The school's first wellness weekend was a much-needed break for all students. The general sentiment among students was highly positive, and on behalf of us all, I'd like to thank the district administration for taking this step in prioritizing mental wellness and curbing student burnout. Thank you.
Wayne Hills would like to congratulate our 2019 North Jersey Area Band members, Josie Van Putnik, Taylor Keenan, Ricky Waller, and Jared Kay. Congratulations also to the 2019 Caldwell University Honors Band members, Cheyenne Ajibe, Ricky Waller, James Thompson, Logan Esverdinez, Alex Valarda, Jared Kay, Miriam Gauz, Chris Alalado Belito, and Josie Van Putnik. On December 4th, the Chamber Choir participated in the NJ SMA Choir Festival at Montclair State University, during which they performed in front of seven other choirs and were critiqued by college music professors. The choir sang "How Merrily We Live" by Michael East and "Sisters from White Christmas" by Irving Berlin. A fun time was had by all. Students in the Wayne Hills High Schools and Wayne Valley High School Automotive Tech Program are assembling bikes that, together with helmets, will be provided to the students in the district primary schools designated by those building nurses. A total of 18 bikes and helmets will be delivered to the schools in time for the holidays by the auto program instructors Steve Hopper and Ken Bergen. The bikes and helmets are sponsored by the auto programs advisory board members and supporters. This year marks the fifth year the event has taken place. Congratulations to the Wayne Hills advisors, our student council leaders, and everyone who made Spirit Week a success. There were 8,902 food items, $1,330 in gift cards, and $1,800 raised to Hope for Henry. Zach Jordan became the first bowler in Wayne Hills' history to win a New Jersey high school singles tournament in bowling. Zach averaged 245 on his way to first place. Tom Lucetta also finished sixth out of 100 bowlers. Great job, boys. The comp to some cheerleaders from Wayne Hills, Wayne Valley, Wayne PAL, Wayne Boys and Girls Club, and Cheer Nazium all teamed up to organize a holiday toy drive. The teams collected toys to be delivered to Patriot, um, award, Hackensack Medical Center. The toys were delivered with the help of the Passaic County Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the school calendar presentation.
So it's not so much a presentation, just...
Well, it's listed under...
Yeah, it's just...
It's listed under there, so...
So basically, I guess we could talk a little bit about the calendar. So we are proud to present only one version of the school calendar for the upcoming year, and I guess there are some details that are worthwhile mentioning. One of them is that there is a little bit of a breakthrough here, in that we're very happy to be able to start the school year before, for the staff members, before Labor Day, okay? That allows our school year, in a difficult calendar year, to end a little bit earlier than maybe we have in the past, maybe not as favorable as the calendar we have for this year as far as the end of the year, but it does end, we end the school year on the 23rd of June. In addition, we've been able to maintain all the other holidays, all of the other traditional days that the district has extended as days off to the community. Those are all included in the calendar, and so I think it's a pretty comprehensive calendar. It includes, like I said, everything that the district has done in prior years, and it also helps us with the beginning of the year and the end of the year. There's benefits to this calendar, so we strongly recommend this calendar. We think it's a great calendar. It does a lot for the district, and it really is, it's a very positive development.
Questions about the calendar? Mrs. Kazan?
I just want to make a comment that I thought this process this year really went smoothly as opposed to in years past, and I know that the administration and the union all worked hard and came up with some great solutions and cooperative, and I want to thank all involved for getting the job done and doing it so well, and I'm all for this calendar. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Toback. I believe this is now your part, Mr. Moffett.
Yes, sir. The board is in receipt of a certification issued by the Office of the County Clerk, County Passaic, on the general election results. I'll read the results from top to bottom. First position on the sheet is Michael L. Bubba, who received 4,968 votes. Second is, from top to bottom again, Suzanne Putup, 5,098 votes, with the third seat filled in by a write-in candidate. That write-in category in total is 2,537 total votes. This year was somewhat unusual in the county, that apparently we're one of three districts that had a write-in candidates win a seat. Of that total write-in, out of the candidates that were written in, the, it's unofficial, I guess you'd like to say, but I have a copy of what was issued to Dawn Kumar, who was the official winner of the write-in portion, and I did receive copies of both, a letter from the Board of Chosen Freeholders and a copy of a certificate of election from the Board of County Canvassers of Passaic County, New Jersey, identifying Dawn Kumar as the winner of that third seat. So I do have that also. But that concludes the report of the election results.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll borrow your pen. Thank you. Okay, revisions to the agenda. You're still up, Mr. Moffett.
Okay, board revisions tonight. We have item number one under T Emergent Education Section. Again, item one, which was approval of out-of-district professional travel for staff members on 12/19/19 attachment. Please remove item number three from the agenda. We are going to add item number 12, which reads, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves the first amended sidebar agreement between the Wayne Township Board of Education and the Wayne Township Administrators' Association regarding payment for completion of additional observations as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same." Under the U Emergent Human Resource Area, and that's items 1 through 15, item number six will be revised, and that's approval for revisions. Revised number 13, which is ID number 8966, revise end date of LOA from 2/7/2020 to 1/30/2020. Revise item number 14, Mary Kate Kocali, revise end date from 2/7/2020 to 1/30/2020. Item number eight, approval of leave requests, revised number four, ID number 8159, revise unpaid days with benefits to read November 26, November 27, and December 23. Also add January 2nd, 2020, and delete all currently listed days. Item number 10, appointment of district staff for the 2019-2020 school year, revise item number six, Leann Morsy, revise effective date from January 8, 2020, instead of the January 3, 2020 date listed. Under Emergent, that's section U, Human Resources Continued, add item number 15, approval of administrative leave, and that reads, "Resolve that Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves for the 2019-2020 school year the following administrative leave." Line number one is ID 9125, that's UPC number 71-06-18/DBJ, paid leave from 12/13/2019, and it's administrative. Line number two, which is ID number 8036, position control number 01-33-05/ANW, that administrative leave is from 12/6/2019 to 12/11/2019, and that's for administrative reason. And that will conclude the revisions and additions to the board agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we're going to open to the public on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employer or student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Do I have a mover?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. Mrs. Shear and Mrs. Albanese.
Seeing nobody come to the podium, let's close for the session.
Second.
I'm Mr. Duffy and Mrs. Kazan. Thank you. Okay. And we are going to go. Mrs. Albanese?
Well, Mr. President, without objection from the board, we'd request that we move all items on consent on tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Any objections? Mr. Badner?
Does this mean the meeting will go faster?
Yes. Nine years Mitch, nine years.
No, no, no.
Then there's a big bash for you, we're trying to get to...
Okay, yes, yes, if there's a party, yes.
Okay. Do we have any objections, so we can move the, all the items? So we do have committee reports, though, tonight, from the last meeting and from this meeting, so those we are going to do. So we'll start, Mr. Giordano, who is all the way over at the left. You were, did Technology meet at the last meeting?
Yes, Technology did meet last meeting.
I know Mr. Pavlik is the chair, but...
Mr. Pavlik has the notes for the meeting, so I apologize, I did not realize she was not going to be here tonight. Otherwise, I'd be happy to give you the report. Could we postpone till the next meeting for that one?
Sure. Mrs. Kazan?
Thank you. Tonight Personnel Committee met with myself, Paula Clark, HR Director, Suzanne Koransky, Head Nurse, and Stacy Shear. We went over the minutes, discussed items on the agenda, a new Narcan policy, which is state-mandated, and Ms. Koransky explained how that will be training for the nurses, athletic directors, and this is something we have to provide at the high school level only. And we discussed some personnel matters, which of course are confidential. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Badner?
I'll pass. I don't have my notes from the Finance Committee meeting. I'll do it at the next meeting.
I'm sure you will. Mrs. Shear?
The Education Committee did not meet last week.
Okay. Mrs. Albanese?
The Facilities and Transportation Committee met tonight. In attendance, Eileen Albanese, Michael Bubba, administrators Bill Moffett and John Mesa. We got an update on the Port Two of the ESOP update, and Mr. Mesa was looking toward a board presentation, hopefully this coming January. We also reviewed the continued staffing need that we'll have for the Preakness Building and a custodian once the building is open, as well as an additional ground crew member. We talked about the Early Childhood Center project update. There was, there is an agenda item tonight, there is an item on the agenda tonight for the Preakness Building that the board will be voting on tonight. We discussed recertification for the Sustainable Jersey for schools. We had a nice update on the district's solar energy plan that we're going to look to bring to the full board again at a future meeting. We talked about the easement at Burdan Avenue and at the Hills parking lot. We are looking at Phase Three of our Next Generation Science Standard Lab at Wayne Valley, and we're evaluating our next projects. And we received an update on the Wayne Valley bathroom that's being remodeled, that we hope will be finished in early January. That's my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Putup?
The Communications Committee met this evening, Dr. Toback, Mr. Ken Palzuski from Wayne Valley, and myself. We had a presentation from a private company with suggestions for improving our online presence for Wayne Public Schools. We discussed continuing with the Communications Exploratory Committee through 2020, and we reviewed recent media coverage of our school's events throughout the district. And I must say now, have a great holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Putup. Okay. So we are moving everything on a consent with the additions to the agenda.
I'll move.
Yes, it was motion by Mrs. Albanese, seconded by Mr. Duffy.
Yes, so we just, do we have any questions about agenda items? Roll call, please.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
I will abstain on U Emergent Human Resources, number 14, transfers, and do I have to abstain on the check register my name tonight? I'm not sure.
Yes, if you were listed, we left a note...
I'll abstain on my name on the check register. W, number one. And yes to the rest. Thank you.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
I'll also abstain on the check register for the check with my name, and yes to the rest.
Mr. Badner?
I'll abstain on W1, and yes to the rest.
And Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now we have one retirement tonight. Mrs. Putup, please.
Doreen Minari. Doreen first began her career as a paraprofessional in Ridgefield in 1994. From there, she spent one year in the Fairlawn School District before coming to Wayne in the 99-2000 school year. Twenty years in Wayne is quite an accomplishment. Doreen has always worked with only the best intentions in mind treating each of her students as if they were her own children. Her focus was always directed toward getting to know her assigned student and helping them to the best of their abilities. Doreen often stated that she wanted to give each of her students roots to grow and wings to fly. Throughout her career, Doreen has worked both as a classroom and a one-to-one para. She began her career in Wayne at Albert Pace and Turune with a one-to-one student before moving on to Randall Carter. From there, she moved to George Washington Middle School. While at George Washington, Doreen worked in the MD program. It was also during this time that she was instrumental in helping to create and name the Stars Program. She then moved on to Pines Lake, where she once again became a one-to-one paraprofessional. Following Pines Lake, she went to Skyler Colfax in a one-to-one setting and transitioned to Wayne Hills this past year. Doreen handled all of her students with respect, compassion, and understanding. Her passion for helping students with special needs to become independent and reach their goals has not gone unnoticed. She will be sorely missed, and we wish her the best in her retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Putup. Okay. At this time, we're going to open to the public on any topic. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comments on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employer or student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Do I have a mover?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Badner and Mr. Giordano. Mr. Klipka, welcome.
Good evening, Mark Klipka, 48 Pine, Chris Harris. Mitch, I'd like to thank you for your nine years of service. I realize it's a thankless job, and hope you enjoy your Thursday evenings, and good luck. And for one last thing, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year, and we'll see you all next year. Good evening.
Thank you, and same to you, Mr. Klipka.
Seeing now when I move to close?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Kazan and Mr. Duffy. Open.
Just quickly, I did go to the delegates' assembly, and Mr., excuse me, Senator Sweeney was there, discussing relief for districts that under S2 might lose money, and they are going to be giving carte blanche to raise taxes on their residents who have been fortunate, possibly not to have received tax increases for years. But the flip side of that was never offered to struggling districts, and I for one will be lobbying against that, bill, from passing. I mean, we had to figure it out. They need to figure it out. And I don't think that's harsh, I just think that if you're going to treat districts a certain way and not get your fiscal house in order, then the taxpayer shouldn't have to bear the burden. I don't believe we will be in that situation or have that ability. We meet our local fair share, and we've been forced to meet it and then some because we were so underfunded. There's another bill that I've received a few phone calls from parents about with regard to vaccines. And from what I understand, it did pass the Assembly but not the Senate. But that doesn't mean it can't come back to the Senate before the end of the session, which is January 13. They were short votes. One of the major concerns, I think, from some parents was whether or not the Gardasil or HPV was going to be mandated. And... I know, the trade is coming. I know. Apparently, the custodian would like me to shut up, too. I get it, I get it. I'm almost done. Well, anyway, I spoke to the School Board Governmental Relations and asked them to speak to the sponsor of the bill to possibly remove that. Because that's not, in my opinion, I don't know about anyone else, a public health crisis. You cannot catch HPV by sneezing on someone, or it's not the public health crisis that measles is. And we really do have to protect our staff. Some people take issue with it, but I understand there will be, while there will be no religious excuse, there can be a medical one. So there are, there's wiggle room. But again, if you have any input on this bill, there's still time for you to reach out to your representatives and tell them where you stand on it. In addition to that, happy, healthy, joyful, delicious holiday, and see you all in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Giordano and then Mr. Badner?
I just want to briefly say a couple of words. It's been a very eventful year for me, my first year on the Board of Education. Tonight was an atypical session. We had the good, we had the bad, we had the wonderful, with our young ladies and gentlemen here singing, our football team doing so well, but what most impressed me was the charitable contributions that the students at all levels in Wayne have been doing. And that's not just them, that's a credit to the parents, it's a credit to the teachers and the administrators for nurturing and fostering that. And it's one of the reasons why I consider this probably one of the best years of my life. Aside from being married and having children, 2019 was an incredible roller coaster ride for me, and many on the board will know, saw some of those highs and saw some of those lows, and I wouldn't trade it for anything. But I do regret one thing, and it's that gentleman, two seats down from me, not being here. I really am looking forward to the new young lady coming in. I look forward to working with her. But during some of the worst times, Mitch was a calming voice in the storm. And he said things, I said, "Why in the world didn't I think of that?" He just pulls it off the top of his head, or a couple of words just silence critics or steers us in the right path. And then he goes and he gets three plates of food and enjoys that while he's here, so that's the price he pays for it, and gives us some levity. So I want to say to the board and to the people of Wayne, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, and a joyous New Year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Mr. Badner?
Mr. Giordano, you are absolutely correct. But seriously, thank you, and thank you to my fellow board members for the kind words. You know, it's a little emotional, but I'll get over it. But seriously, thank you for everything. Thank you, administration. You've done a phenomenal job. And I look forward to great things happening in the future. I think Wayne is in a great position educationally, academically. I think all areas of the school district have really improved. You know, facilities, Mr. Mesa, I mean you and your team, phenomenal. You know, coming up with ideas and constantly looking at opportunities to create efficiencies in terms of grant opportunities and ways to provide savings, but at the same time attacking those areas that need to be attacked. It's a huge school district with a lot of buildings and a lot of needs. So I know that we've been doing a great job because of you and your team and so many other people that have done such a great job here. Our technology is well beyond where I thought it would get to when we were looking at a computer in a classroom, and you know, can't we just get one more? The one-to-one initiative is something that, you know, districts are striving to accomplish. And we were at the forefront of it, not without some criticism, but we needed it, and we're there. So, you know, I look forward to the great things happening in the future, and I know that I could be long-winded. I don't want to take up any more time. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Badner. Mrs. Shear?
I have no kind words for Mitch. Because Mitch and I have been friends for over 12 years, and someone needs to bring his ego back down to reality. So I have no kind words for him, and he talked me into this. But I did want to say a happy holidays, happy, safe, healthy holidays to everybody in the Wayne community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I just want to say everyone have a very healthy and happy holidays. And also, one thing we didn't mention tonight, but please keep the Pavlik family in your hearts tonight as they mourn the death of Mr. Pavlik's father-in-law. So, that's all I have. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Second.
Mr. Badner and Mrs. Putup, thank you all.